Good morning, all. As is my habit, I'll wait just a few moments to get everyone connected.
Good morning, Officer Kinsey. This is Tilden Kim, City of Solvang.
Good morning.
Morning. I just want to let you know that my colleague Chelsea O'Sullivan, she's in our San Luis Obispo office. And unfortunately, this morning, our interconnection, internet connection for our office went down. So she's, she's right now busily in transit to go home and work now and connect from home.
Okay.
Luckily, her home is not as far away as some commutes here in Southern California. So that's the good news. The bad, the bad news is she just texted me and said she's, you know, she will probably be able to, you know, get on in about 10 minutes. So I apologize for the delay.
Oh, well, thank you for letting me know. And 10 minutes is not long. I was going to ask whether we need to move things around to accommodate, but it sounds like by the time we get warmed up and going and you're here, that she'll be able to hopefully join us. So thank you for letting me know.
But certainly, if Officer Kinsey, if you wanted to start with the, the normal introductions that you do on a daily basis, you know, you know, we can go, go over that since Ms. O'Sullivan has been through, you know, that narrative before.
It's familiar. All right. And I will, with that, I will go ahead and get started with our normal, as our normal introductions, which most of you are quite familiar with, but it's to orient us. Good morning. Thank you for being here. It's December 13th, 2023. I'm hearing Officer Nicole Kinsey with the Administrative Hearings Office of the State Water Resources Control Board. This is a continuation of the hearing on the pending petition for change by the City of Solvang of water right permit 15878, which authorizes diversions of water from the Santa Inez River in Santa Barbara County. This hearing is being conducted by Zoom web conference and is also being broadcast live on the AHO YouTube channel. Both the audio and video are being recorded and we will post files of this recording along with the Zoom generated transcript to the AHO FTP site. The YouTube recording is also available on the AHO YouTube webpage. If at any time today you're experiencing technical difficulties trying to communicate with us, please send an email to the AHO@adminhrgoffice@waterboards.ca.gov. AHO staff are monitoring that email inbox. Assisting me today are the usual staff of the Administrative Hearings Office. We have Skylar Anderson, Kyle Woolridge, and Nicole Mullen. As usual, Ms. Mullen will be handling the screen sharing of exhibits and moving along of any slides today. If you are a witness for us today, you may simply ask Ms. Mullen to advance to the next slide when you're ready in your presentation. And attorneys, you may ask Ms. Mullen directly to please bring up a particular exhibit as needed. If at any time I'm experiencing technical difficulties during this hearing and I'm not able to rejoin the Zoom conference within a few minutes, one of my staff will call a recess until I'm able to rejoin you. We will take breaks today, as has been our habit. We'll have, or as needed, a mid-morning break. We'll have lunch. It's been normally my practice to do a full hour for lunch. I want to make sure we get through all of our witnesses today. So we'll make that call depending on how far we, we get this morning. And then I do plan to hold the hearing to a hard stop at 5:00 PM regardless of where we are. So you can count on that. We'll wrap up at a convenient breaking point before then. We met last week, so I think I will, I will not go through all of the appearances today. I think we can see from the Zoom list here, recording, who is on the line, but I will look to the room and see if we have anyone who's on the call who plans on participating in the hearing, who, other than the witnesses, who has not previously been with us and had the opportunity to introduce themselves.
Hearing Officer, nobody new from our side, but once again, I will unfortunately need to be in and out a little today. So Mr. O'Brien will be covering for me while I'm gone.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stroud. I will just quickly orient where I think we are for the day. Last week, we completed the case in chief testimony of all the parties and completed Solvang's rebuttal witnesses. We went, we heard from two of CDFW's rebuttal witnesses, with the exception of Mr. Evans, who I believe we'll hear from today. And then we also heard from Cal Trout's rebuttal witness. I, my intent is that we would begin today with either CDFW's remaining rebuttal witness, Mr. Evans, or NIMs rebuttal witness, Mr. Bush. And we would go through those and then turn to CCRB for an opening statement and presentation of rebuttal witnesses. I do want to mention that I did get out an evidentiary ruling after 5:00 PM yesterday, and I don't know that all of you had a chance to read it with your morning coffee. And I apologize for that late, late hit, as it were. The punchline is that I, I do think I'm going to allow very limited sir rebuttal on hydrology or hydrogeology may be the better word for it. And I want to talk about how we do that. I think it will require another hearing day. So I want, my goal today is to get through the witnesses we have on our schedule. Talk about scheduling another hearing day, presumably that will be in 2024. Given the holidays and everything and that, you know, I expect that will slightly push back our schedule. So I, I just, I'd like to talk about that. And I'd like to talk about the scope of sir rebuttal. So maybe over your lunch break, it's worth checking in with your witnesses if, if like I said, I think it'll be limited. So I'm hoping we can narrow this down to just a few witnesses on sir rebuttal, if not one or two. But talking about their availability and what you think the scope of sir rebuttal might be, I realize that discussion about sir rebuttal may be informed by hearing from CCRB's witnesses today and cross-examination. And we'll see what comes up there. So I did want to flag that if we don't get to the offer and acceptance of evidence, we, we dealt with solving previously, but if we don't get to the other parties, that's something that I, that we could defer until a later time. So I want to, if we're meeting again anyway. So like I said, my goal today is to get through the witnesses and then go from there and make a plan. Maybe I'll ask just for planning purposes, and I realize we don't have Ms. O'Sullivan with us yet. So I don't want to to get ahead of ourselves. I want to give her that leeway. Unexpected technical difficulties, we all can relate. But maybe I'll turn to Ms. Germanario and Ms. Beal. Do you have a preference or a plan as to which of you goes first this morning in terms of presenting your witnesses?
Yes, Ms. Kinsey, we had discussed Ms. Beal going first with Rick Bush.
Okay. Thank you. And then with that information, maybe what I will do as we're, before we get started is look to the room to see if there are other procedural issues we should talk about at this time before we hear from Mr. Bush.
I have, I have a question. If I could ask Mr. Bivens, if he knows what order he plans Mr. Mulder and Mr. Van Linden to go in.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Mr. Mulder will go first and Mr. Van Linden will go last.
Okay.
Thank you. That's helpful.
And Officer Kinsey, I just got a text from Ms. O'Sullivan. She says she's now home and, and logging in. So.
Okay, great. That's helpful. And we can, we can just wait a few moments, but are there any other procedural issues we should talk about in the, in the, in the moment?
It's a rule that approaches a law of physics, but that will happen on the day you have a hearing or a trial.
Yes.
All right. Looks like Chelsea O'Sullivan has made it.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you fine. Thank you. And, and welcome. And I'm sorry about your not the morning you planned. So.
Thank you for everyone's patience. And I do have, Taylor is sitting here with me. We're just sharing the, the Zoom. Actually, I have one laptop between the two of us this morning. So.
Great. Well, thank you. Thank you for making the best of it. We, we got through, just to orient you, we got through introductions. There was no one new joining us, so the usual appearances have been, are carried over. And we were just discussing the order of witnesses. We're planning to hear from Mr. Bush first with NIMs and then Mr. Evans. And then Mr. Bivens shared that he plans to present his witnesses with Mr. Mulder first and then Mr. Van Linden. So that is our plan. And we, we, we paused very briefly. You were very quick. We paused very briefly before calling Mr. Bush up to the stand. So that's where we are. And I think we're prepared to move forward. Is there anything else looking to the room or to you, Ms. O'Sullivan, any other procedural issues that we should address before we get started with Mr. Bush?
Well, and then just one note, Ms. O'Sullivan, Officer Kinsey requested that during the lunch hour or the break that we contact Tim nicely and try to get some good dates in early January or mid-January for the, the limited sir rebuttal that was allowed in Officer Kinsey's ruling yesterday.
Excellent. We can certainly do that.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Kim, for summarizing that. I did say all those things. And I think I also apologize for the, what I called a late hit on that ruling. So I recognize it may take some time to digest.
And, and, and Officer Kinsey, I, I imagine that applies to all the other parties in their council in terms of clearing out, getting some good dates in.
Correct. Yes, please.
Any particular week that you're shooting for, Officer Kinsey?
I, well, other than as, in some ways, as soon as possible, but I will, I want to respect what I imagine might be vacation plans. That first week of January is, we have New Year's and I think a lot of, at least from my perspective, kids don't have, or you know, there may be travel plans. So the soonest I would look would be the week of January 8th. And then the following week is the Martin Luther King holiday, but we could do the week of January 15th on following. If those are possible, I think that would be ideal. So we can wrap up our, our hearing days, but we'll, we'll just have to see. And maybe we'll return to this as we have time. I just want to make sure we get through as much as we can this morning.
And so preferably the, the week of January 8th, and if that isn't going to work, then some dates in the week of January 15th.
Yes. All right. With that, I'll turn to you, Ms. Beal. Are you prepared to call Mr. Bush to present his rebuttal?
Yes. Yes, we are, Mr. Bush. Before we begin.
And I'm sorry, I'll go ahead and, and, and welcome, Mr. Bush. Mr. Bush, if you would, please come off mute for a moment. Thank you once again for joining us. And I just wanted to remind you here, do you recall Mr. Bush taking the oath regarding the truth of your testimony when you testified in this proceeding on November 9th?
Yes, I do.
And do you understand that that oath applies to your testimony today?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And I will turn things over to you, Ms. Beal. And with just the reminder that in your introduction, please ask Mr. Bush to affirm that is written rebuttal testimony is true and correct. And then also please refer to the exhibit number for our records. I'd appreciate it.
Yes, Mr. Bush is here to summarize his rebuttal testimony and take any cross-exam questions. His rebuttal testimony is marked as NIMs Exhibit NIMs 23. And Rick, before you go ahead with your summary, if you could affirm that NIMs 23 is a true and correct copy of your rebuttal testimony.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Please go ahead with your summary.
Thank you for the introduction. So my testimony is based on my expertise developed working as a steelhead biologist for more than 20 years. I routinely consult on the effects of water withdrawal projects and their effects on threatened and endangered steelhead. In my summary today, I rely on Solvang's own analysis, which indicate there will be a localized effect on surface flow in the main stem San Inez River. I am providing my expert advice on how steelhead would be affected based on the analysis provided by Solvang. I am not intending to provide expert opinion on the hydrological effects of the Solvang project. Lastly, I've participated in water right protest in which NIMs worked with the applicant to resolve uncertainties regarding project effects through the development of a NIMs approved monitoring and adaptive management plan. I have reviewed the direct testimony filed by the other parties to this matter relevant to the project's effects on steelhead, focusing on the testimony of Solvang's witness, Joseph Gibson. Mr. Gibson makes several references in his testimony to a critical management reach, which is misleading because it suggests that, that only a specific reach in the main stem San Inez River must be afforded proper environmental protections. That claim is not accurate and unsupported. On page 19 of his testimony, Mr. Gibson suggests that the manner of pump arrangement would reduce the effects of the city's pumping. The claim is based on a number of invalid or inappropriate assumptions. For instance, the claim again references critical management areas to suggest that only such areas require environmental deference. However, the entire main stem San Inez River is designated critical habitat for endangered steelhead. And for this reason, all feasible modifications must be applied to anthropogenic activities to ensure designated critical habitat, i.e. the main stem river remains functional to serve the intended conservation role for the species. On page 23 of his testimony, Mr. Gibson quotes the Bureau of Reclamation's 2021 biological assessment stating, there have not been any observed changes in the movement or numbers of steelhead resulting from replenished groundwater extractions. Mr. Gibson's reference to changes in the movement of numbers of steelhead is misleading in that it suggests that a NIMs approved steelhead monitoring plan in the main stem San Inez River has been implemented since issuance of the 2000 opinion. To the contrary, NIMs has provided the Bureau of Reclamation numerous letters. They are enclosed in our evidence folder as NIMs 34, NIMs 35, NIMs 36, NIMs 39, and NIMs 40 on developing a meaningful monitoring plan to evaluate water releases in response to reasonable and prudent measure six in NIMs's 2000 biological opinion that is intended to recharge the groundwater basins downstream of Lake Kachuma. It is noteworthy that the limited monitoring that has occurred has documented that Southern California steelhead do move downstream in response to water right order 8918 water releases. Our evidence as NIMs 29, NIMs 30, and NIMs 42 demonstrates this. These trapping results required by determined condition six in NIMs's September 8, 2000 biological opinion invalidate one of the assumptions relied on for the development of NIMs's 2000 biological opinion. And that assumption is steelhead would not move downstream in the lower San Inez River during summer water rights releases. The 2000 biological opinion was based on one or more assumptions that have proven invalid over time. One assumption, which applies to these proceedings, involves the expectation that water releases from Bradbury Dam would remain in stream and be sufficient to support juvenile rearing throughout the dry season in designated downstream reaches, including the Alice Al Reach. Instead, the flows required by the 2000 biological opinion have not resulted in sufficient downstream flows to, to support juvenile steelhead rearing. Mr. Gibson incorrectly makes the conclusion that the San Inez River is being properly managed using NIMs's 2000 biological opinion because river conditions are being provided that allow for steelhead to occur in the San Inez River. As previously noted in my summary, the 2000 biological opinion is based on one or more assumptions that have been proven invalid over time. The entire main stem of the San Inez River, beginning at Bradbury Dam, is designated critical habitat for endangered steelhead. NIMs's Southern California Steelhead Plan, NIMs 7, has defined the San Inez River as a core one watershed. That designation classifies the watershed as essential for recovering the entire population of Southern California steelhead. One of the key recovery actions identified for the San Inez River in NIMs's recovery plan includes ensuring groundwater extractions do not disrupt essential habitat functions to support the life history and habitat requirements of steelhead. Merely maintaining some steelhead presence in the San Inez watershed, as Mr. Gibson concludes, is not the goal of the Endangered Species Act or of NIMs's 2000 opinion. As described in the effects analysis of NIMs's 2016 draft opinion, the operation of the Kachuma Project appreciably reduces or precludes development and maintenance of physical or biological features of critical habitat designated for Southern California steelhead DPS in the San Inez River downstream of Bradbury Dam and is expected to continue reducing the likelihood of both species' survival and recovery. The barometer for proper management of the San Inez River in regard to endangered steelhead is not merely whether conditions allow for the species to occur. The real issue is whether the habitat and life history requirements of the species are being met such that the long-term survival and recovery of the, of the species are being promoted. With regard to Mr. Gibson's claim on page 22, NIMs advises that the 2000 opinion is not the governing biological document for fisheries management on the San Inez River. Instead, NIMs's 2012 Southern California Steelhead Recovery Plan and our 2023 five-year status review serve that purpose because they are based on the latest, best available science. Relying on the 2000 opinion, as the claim suggests, would ignore the extensive new information that has been acquired since issuance of that biological opinion, which indicates that changes in the pattern and magnitude of water releases from Bradbury Dam are necessary to ensure the long-term survival and recovery of endangered steelhead, including life history pathways for juvenile steelhead. The 2016 draft opinion includes an extensive explanation of the new information that has been acquired since the issuance of the 2000 opinion. And by extension, the rationale for undertaking the new consult consultation with the Bureau of Reclamation that resulted in the 2016 draft opinion. As a matter of clarifying Mr. Gibson's assertion that the draft opinion was not entered into the administrative record for the Kachuma proceedings, the information contained in the 2016 draft opinion provides useful scientific information that pertains to the habitat and life history requirements of endangered steelhead in the main stem San Inez River that should be used to temper proposals that have the potential to impact the survival and recovery of the species. In addition, the 2016 draft opinion includes scientific information and analyses that are reliable to inform decisions regarding surface flow requirements for growth and survival of endangered steelhead. Overall, the 2016 draft opinion represents the best available information for the main stem San Inez River in the foregoing context. For the purpose of assessing the impacts of Solvang's Riverwells project, it is inappropriate to rely on NIMs's September 8, 2000 biological opinion that analyzed U.S. Bureau of Reclamation's operation and maintenance of the Bradbury Dam. Numerous technical memorandums were published by NIM Southwest Fisheries Science Center from 2005 to 2015 that informed the effects analysis and NIMs's biological opinions that informed the effects analysis in NIMs's 2016 draft biological opinion. Select peer-reviewed scientific publications demonstrate steelhead use main stem habitats for life history expression, rapid growth, and increased survival.
I'm going to object here, Officer Kinsey. While the point that the draft.
You have two devices on.
No.
Oh, there we go.
Okay.
I think you're better now.
Okay. Certainly, the point that the draft biological opinion, you know, includes new scientific information is in Mr. Bush's testimony. However, he's testifying with greater detail to the type of reports that are.
Those reports, those reports are cited in paragraph 11 of Mr. NIMs 23. So I don't understand the objection.
Give me just a moment.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. With that, I can withdraw my objection.
Thank you. Please go ahead, Mr. Bush.
Thank you. NIMs's 2023 five-year review summary and evaluation of Southern California steelhead is the most recent documented in my rebuttal testimony. Our 2023 five-year review cites NIMs's November 28, 2016 draft biological opinion and recommends the most crucial recovery action is to reduce habitat fragmentation and impediments to volitional steelhead migration on the San Inez River in order to increase, increase population viability of Southern California steelhead populations.
Objection to that testimony while the five-year review is mentioned, the specific recommendations from that review I do not see in Mr. Bush's testimony. And I would ask that that additional detail that he just stated would be stricken.
And I would state in response that Mr. Bush is, these are exhibits that NIMs has submitted that Mr. Bush relied on in preparing his expert testimony. It was not our understanding that Mr. Bush needed to incorporate verbatim all of the information in the exhibits that informed his testimony. I believe that these exhibits, which are published agency documents, of which the hearing officer could take judicial notice in any event, are appropriate subject matter for Mr. Bush's testimony.
And I, I'm going to overrule the objection in this case because it's as a description of a, of, an exhibit that has been introduced. A brief description of an exhibit that has been introduced and keeping in mind that details about the document would need to be within the, the written testimony, but in this reference, I, I think the, the testimony here is appropriate. So I'm going to overrule that objection. Mr. Bush, I believe it's back to you.
Thank you. Mr. Gibson states that mitigation measure FIS-5 requires the city to coordinate with other agencies to develop and implement an operations pumping plan. NIMs has requested the opportunity to review the city's operations pumping plan since we submitted comments on the notice of preparation of a draft environmental impact report in 2011. That's Exhibit NIMs 37. In order to provide recommendations to the city to minimize and avoid adverse impacts to steelhead and their designated critical habitat. Mr. Gibson erroneously indicates that FEIR addendum addresses all potentially significant impacts from the Riverwells project. Mr. Gibson specifically highlights mitigation measures FIS 6 and FIS 7 in his testimony. Mr. Gibson specifically highlights mitigation measures FIS Six and FIS Seven in his testimony. With regard to FIS Six, continuing to coordinate with other well pumpers in the area, i.e. Alisal Ranch ID Number One, Santinaz River Water Conservation District, is not a new mitigation measure to mitigate an effect of the River Wells Project, but rather an ongoing activity that has not been effective at avoiding adverse effects to Steelhead. With regard to FIS Seven, here again, Mr. Gibson refers to the extraction of groundwater resources in the designated critical habitat reach, and participation in a regionally coordinated water management solution that protects Omicus. Instead of relying on mitigation measures FIS, uh, FIS Six and Seven, NIMPS recommends that accomplishing the goal of minimizing and avoiding adverse impacts to endangered Steelhead throughout the Santinaz River mainstem should include the city developing a meaningful monitoring plan that is capable of detecting the, the effects of well pumping on all life stages of Steelhead and implementing a NIMPS-approved adaptive management plan to reconcile any effects the River Wells Project has on Steelhead or their designated critical habitat. Solvang has not developed a draft monitoring and adaptive management plan for agency review and approval to detect dewatering of the project area or stranding of Steelhead. Monitoring and adaptive management are needed to minimize and avoid the potential for causing take of endangered Steelhead. Removing 2.73 CFS of flow from the Santinaz River during times of low flows without a meaningful monitoring protocol in place to verify that Steelhead or their designated critical habitat are not being adversely affected is expected to result in a significant and avoidable impact to the species. Project terms and conditions that would allow the River Wells Project to be implemented while minimizing and avoiding adverse effects to endangered Steelhead include a detailed year-round monitoring and adaptive management plan that is submitted to and approved by NIMPS. And Solvang shall cease or initiate pumping from any and all wells under Permit One-Five-Eight-Seven-Eight when Santinaz River surface flow is insufficient for maintaining sufficient depth for adult and juvenile migratory needs, as well as maintaining sufficient water quantity and quality for year-round Steelhead rearing consistent with designated critical habitat. The determination of the minimum stream flow triggers for adult migration, small emigration, and juvenile Steelhead rearing should be based on RPA element number one enclosed with NIMPS's November Twenty-Eight, 2016 Draft Biological Opinion.
Objection. The details regarding the, uh, flow requirements as permit conditions is not within the scope of Mr. Bush's testimony. I'm looking at paragraph twenty-four and I'm sorry, Ms. Beal, I think, yeah, thank you. The echo is whenever you unmute. Um, and so I would, I would submit that that additional detail, you know, we've had other evidentiary objections on rebuttal testimony to new and expanded, uh, permit terms and, you know, it's just not within the scope of rebuttal or the scope of, of Mr. Bush's written rebuttal testimony that's been submitted. And I would ask that that be stricken at this time.
Ms. Beal, would you like to respond to that? Oh, I think we're, we may need to unmute you. I'm looking to my team. Or maybe you can make it. There we go. Sorry about that.
Yes, I, well, I have a separate mute button on my laptop that I've been using, so I'm trying to stay on.
Coordinate it, yes.
Mr. Bush goes into quite a bit of detail, um, about the 2016 Biological Opinion and the flows. I'm trying to find exactly where that is in the testimony. It could be that the reference to the table in the 2016 opinion was in his direct testimony, so it might already be covered in our record.
If I can respond, Ms. Kinsey, the objection is not to that he might have referred to the table in the 2016 BiOP is that he's characterizing it now as a permit condition that, uh, was so previous to the state, his statements not part of the record. You know, describing a specific permit condition that, that, that NIMPS is recommending, that's new.
Right. I, I think I understood that objection with, um, with respect to his testimony about uh, a permit term when, when surface flow is insufficient for migration or rearing.
That he's providing in a narrative form the numeric values that were included as permit terms. So he was just describing it as in a narrative format.
The permit terms submitted, the permit terms that were submitted by the fisheries entities?
Correct. Instead of citing a specific number, he was just describing the intent of those permit terms as those flows needed to, um, promote and sustain juvenile rearing migration, et cetera. So he, he just provided a narrative explanation of those terms.
And are those permit terms referenced in his, um, rebuttal testimony?
Yes. I think we were, we were back toward the end of the testimony.
I see. It's at the end of paragraph twenty-four. It's actually the last sentence.
And Ms. Kinsey, if I may be heard, uh, so I agree that that citation is there to the submitted terms. However, Mr. Bush was elaborating even beyond what is in those permit terms as written. Those permit terms do not connect the flow requirements in them to the 2016 draft BiOP requirements, which is what Dr. Mr. Bush was, was saying.
I believe he, what, I believe he was repeating ver, almost verbatim what's in paragraph twenty-four that the pumping should be limited to ensure, now that I'm looking at it, adequate in-stream flows for migrating adults and juvenile Steelhead. So that's what he just said.
I think, and you know, and we're operating on this situation where we don't have a court reporter, so we can't get a, get a immediate, um, reread on what was just said. I understand the objection, Ms. O'Sullivan, that there may have been some, um, elaboration on what was explicitly included in the permit terms, um, referenced here and, and Mr. Bush's explanation. I'm not going to strike the testimony in part because of, um, we can't read it back. So the objection is noted. Um, I'm not sure there was a direct connection to the 2016 BiOP, but you will, of course, have a chance to, to ask Mr. Bush any questions about this. So I'm going to, I'm not going to strike the testimony at this time. Um, and we'll move forward, but I, I'm, I note the objection. I understand it.
Thank you.
And then, uh, turning back to Mr. Bush, did you, I'm not sure if you completed or not. Do you, back to you if you have more.
Thank you. In summary, it's my professional opinion that Mr. Gibson's testimony is based on a number of, a number of flawed assumptions regarding the potential effects of the city's proposed project on endangered Steelhead. As proposed, the project is likely to reduce the quality and quantity of critical habitat for Steelhead, potentially leading to harm, injury, or take of this species. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bush.
Thank you.
Uh, with that, I will turn to you, Ms. O'Sullivan. Uh, do you have cross-examination for Mr. Bush?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Kinsey. Good morning, Mr. Bush.
Good morning.
Thank you for, uh, taking the time to answer some questions from me today. Uh, so first off, just looking at your testimony, you don't rely on Mr. Custis's hydrology analysis for your testimony, correct?
I did not have that information when I developed my testimony. That is correct.
And similarly, you don't rely on Mr. De Muha's analysis in your rebuttal testimony, correct?
Are we referring, my rebuttal testimony is entirely focused on Mr. Gibson's testimony.
So the, but the statements that you make regarding, uh, hydrology and the potential impacts from the city's project, they're not based on Mr. De Muha's analysis, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And in fact, the only hydrology testimony or, um, reports that you do cite are, uh, from Mr. Nicely's analysis, correct?
Uh, addendum to the, the EIR, correct.
Thank you. And you're aware that in Mr. Nicely's rebuttal testimony, he disagrees with how you apply that analysis, correct?
The analysis I applied was the analysis provided in the city's addendum.
You're aware that Mr. Nicely disagrees with your use of that analysis, correct?
I, I listened to Mr. Nicely's rebuttal. I, yes.
Okay, thank you. So based on that, there's no hydrological testimony supporting your species or habitat impact conclusions, correct?
I, I would refer back to how I led off my rebuttal today, that I, I am not, uh, opining on any hydrological analyses that I'm just basing my, uh, review based on the information provided by Solvang.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so you also in your testimony discuss a recent dewatering event, correct?
Uh, that is correct.
Okay, and you attribute that dewatering in part to a lack of coordination between reclamation, the city, and other pumpers, correct?
I believe it's a contributing factor.
Okay. And to support that statement, you cite, uh, two exhibits, National Marine Fisheries Service Thirty-nine and Forty-three, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Ms. Mullen, and I might have missed it, but I believe it's Ms. Mullen today still. Okay. Uh, Ms. Mullen, do you mind, if you, if you don't mind pulling up National Marine Fisheries Service Thirty-nine, please? Thank you so much. Okay, and Mr. Bush, this is, uh, you reckon, do you recognize this as National Marine Fisheries Service Exhibit Number Thirty-nine?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And this is a letter from the service to the board, uh, regarding the city's petition for change, correct?
That is correct.
And it's dated 2017?
That is correct.
Okay, and so the service is, and NIMPS is, is providing comments on the city's petition for change, right?
That is correct, uh, on their, um, lack of a detailed operational pumping plan and also-
We don't, I don't need you to summarize it at this point. Uh, so the, but the, the letter, it doesn't discuss the city's coordination with reclamation at all, does it?
Uh, I believe in bullet number two down below, it talks about coordination.
We could scroll there, Ms. Mullen. So bullet number two, as we can see, discusses that the board should retain discretion over the permit terms. There's no statement regarding the city's coordination with reclamation, correct?
There is reference to a comprehensive study of the Santinaz River water resources. So I take, I take that as meaning that there would be coordination amongst the different groups.
Okay.
And there, further footnoted lower below, uh, there is, uh, additional information to this effect.
Okay, but again, this letter does not refer to reclamation directly, correct?
Uh, this letter is, can you scroll up? That's correct, to the State Water Resource Control Board.
Okay. And in the, the text that you were just pointing to that you relied on for the basis for your statement, there's no specific reference to other pumpers, correct?
Well, I was trying to focus in on, um, footnote number two. And it talks about a recent assess, uh, recent assessment concerning water allocations concluded that the Santinaz River water resources are over-allocated. So that-
Right, but the letter does not refer to other pumpers, correct? Directly. Doesn't use those words.
Not by name, but other water resource, groundwater users.
Um, we can move off of this, Ms. Mullen. Thank you. If we could bring up NIMPS Exhibit Forty-three, please? Thank you, Ms. Mullen. And so this is a letter, first of all, Doc, Mr. Bush, you rec, you recognize this as NIMPS Exhibit Forty-three, correct?
That is correct.
And it's a letter from the State Water Resources Control Board to reclamation, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and this, this letter does describe a dewatering event, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and this letter doesn't reference the city of solving, correct?
Uh, it's been a while since I've reviewed this letter. I, I do not know.
Okay, and it doesn't reference other pumpers along the river, right?
No, it, it's pretty much focused on a dewatering event.
Okay, and it doesn't mention coordination by reclamation with the city of solving or other pumpers, correct?
What it does is presents an instance where, based on the current operations of the Two Thousand Opinion, we were expecting to have downstream reaches fully watered. And contrary to our expectation, we found that based on the water releases, there are times, even when reclamation is releasing certain flows, that certain reaches downstream dewater. That is the focus of the citation.
Right, but there's nothing in this letter that connects that to the city of solving or other pumpers on the river, correct?
There is, uh, there is no evidence of why it occurred, just that it occurred.
Okay, thank you. We can take that down, Ms. Mullen. Uh, and no further questions.
Thank you, Ms. O'Sullivan. If we can, uh, I, I don't know if this is my view, or we can un-spotlight me so I can see the room, please, team. Appreciate it. Um, I'll look to CCRB, Mr. Bivens. Do you have questions for Mr. Bush?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I will continue through, uh, Parent District.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, ID Number One.
No questions.
Thank you, and Alisal Guest Ranch.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, based on that cross-examination, which was fairly limited, um, do you have, Ms. Beal, do you have redirect for Mr. Bush?
Uh, no, I don't.
Thank you. I don't have any questions, um, at this time for Mr. Bush. I will look to my team. I know, I went out of order here, but I'll look to my team. Mr. Anderson or Mr. Wool, Woolridge, do you have questions?
I don't.
I think that was two "I don't," so, thank you. Um, with that then, thank you, Mr. Bush. I appreciate you joining us once again today. I really appreciate your testimony and, and your time here today. And with that, I believe you're excused for the morning. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this point, I'd like to go ahead and move to, um, CDFW's remaining witness. Ms. Germanario or Mr. Puccini, are you prepared to call Mr. Evans?
Oh, yes, we're prepared to call Mr. Evans now.
All right, Mr. Evans, if, there you are. I see you're on screen and unmuted, so thank you. Welcome. Uh, good morning, Mr. Evans. Do you, do you recall taking the oath regarding the truth of your testimony when you testified in this proceeding on November eighth?
Yes, I do.
And do you understand that oath to apply to your testimony today?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Germanario, just a brief reminder, in your introduction, Mr. Evans, please ask him to affirm that his written rebuttal testimony is true and correct, and also refer to the, um, exhibit number. That would be helpful. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, CDFW is pleased to call expert witness Kyle Evans. Mr. Evans is a senior environmental scientist supervisor overseeing the Steelhead Recovery and Restoration Program in CDFW's South Coast Region. He has extensive expertise and experience in fisheries biology. Mr. Evans, uh, is Exhibit CDFW One-O-Three, your true and correct written rebuttal testimony?
Yes, it is.
And, uh, can you affirm Exhibit CDFW One-O-Two is your true and correct, uh, slide presentation summarizing your written rebuttal testimony?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Uh, so at this time, we will ask, uh, Mr. Evans to provide a summary of his rebuttal testimony. So, uh, Ms. Mullen, if, uh, you could please pull up, uh, Exhibit CDFW One-O-Two on the screen. Thank you. Thank you, uh, Ms. Thank you, uh, uh, Mr. Evans, you can proceed when you're ready.
All right, thank you very much. Um, as Mr. Germanario, uh, indicated, uh, I am providing my rebuttal testimony today. Um, if we could please move to the next slide, please. Um, in preparation of this rebuttal testimony, I reviewed the following materials, which include the direct testimony of Mr. Murphy, Mr. Vanderlin, Mr. Matthews, Mr. Gibson, and Mr. Nicely. In addition to the presentations of Mr. Gibson, Mr. Nicely, Mr. Vanderlin, and Mr. Matthews, um, the associated solving exhibit numbers are presented here. Um, we can move to the next slide, please. As I will be discussing in my presentation, um, there are five key findings in my reviews at point that, uh, included in my rebuttal testimony. Um, first off, the reduction in project scope does not, uh, equal reduction or does not remove all impacts. Um, second of all, the two thousand biological opinion is mischaracterized and does not represent the best available science for the San Inez River. Uh, third, the mitigation measures fish one through fish seven do not adequately protect fish and wildlife resources. Uh, number four, or D, it'd be twenty twenty-one biological opinion, which is quoted within the testimony of Mr. Gibson, incorrectly implies a direct relationship between groundwater levels and steelhead population and mischaracterizes some genetic research. Uh, and finally, uh, point E is the continued existence of omikus in the San Inez River is not proof of a healthy population. Move to the next slide, please. So to begin, um, the expert testimonies, um, presented by the city of solving, which I reviewed, state that a reduction in the scope of the project, um, will reduce the impacts. Um. The all solving's experts opine that the reduction in project scope will result in reduction of impacts already identified as less than significant in the FEIR. While the reduction in scope will reduce impacts, it will not eliminate all impacts that would result from the currently proposed project and the revised proposed wells project and will still have short and long-term impacts on the San Inez River and the steelhead that use that river. Um, additionally, the impacts of the proposed project should be evaluated relative to baseline conditions to show the full scope of impacts on public trust resources. Within the testimony of, um, Mr. Gibson, uh, it is stated that the assessment of impacts downstream of the Alasol Bridge, um, were not accounted for. Uh, and that the cumulative impacts may underrepresent or maybe underrepresented. This is a quote from solving exhibit four, uh, lines sixteen to nineteen. Pumping by others and the reach of the San Inez River alluvium below the Alasol Bridge was not included in the analysis.
Uh, just to the statement that it was Mr. Gibson's characterization that the cumulative impacts, um, may underrepresent the the impacts from the project. Uh, that is Mr. Evans' opinion, but it's not Mr. Gibson's opinion, so objection to that characterization.
Um, I note the, I note the objection, and I'm I'm not going to strike the testimony, but the objection is noted. Um, you may continue, Mr. Evans.
Thank you. Um, the it is unclear, um, how the impacts of the proposed project and the mitigation measures solving is presented can adequately protect steelhead resources without fully understanding the impacts of existing pumping by others in and around the proposed project well area and the degree of cumulative impacts from the proposed project when added to this existing pumping. If we can move to the next slide, please. Within the testimony of Mr. Gibson, um, there's a quote, um, that states that environmentally, the Alasol Reach and not the reach below Alasol Bridge was designated as critical habitat management reach in the two thousand biological opinion for the Kachuma Project. Um, a true, which correct copy was included, and this is indicated on page thirty-nine. Um, I reviewed the two thousand biological opinion and page thirty-nine of the two thousand opinion does not discuss the designation of critical habitat and does not quantify or mention the habitat present at or near the Alasol Bridge or downstream of it. On page fifteen of the two thousand biological opinion, NIMSS explains that the designated critical habitat for steelhead includes all waters and substrates below natural barriers and dams, which would include the proposed project area up and downstream of the Alasol Bridge. Um, it can be noted that within the two thousand biological opinion, NIMSS does state that in their, um, judgment, the majority of the main stem of the San Inez River serves as migration habitat, although, uh, as noted above, rearing and some spawning takes place in the first ten miles below the dam. While this quote from the two thousand biological opinion speaks to the quality of habitat up and downstream of the proposed project area, um, the characterization by Mr. Gibson's quote, um, above is, uh, it does not match that characterization that, um, environmentally, the reach below Alasol Bridge is not, um, important. Additionally, this judgment based by NIMSS, uh, in the two thousand biological opinion was based on limited field visits and doesn't have a bearing over the designation of critical habitat as defined by the Federal Endangered Species Act. Um, finally, the solving's, uh, FEIR found no significant impacts to steelhead. The FEIR incorrectly focused on impacts on the critical management reach, as they defined, upstream of the Alasol Bridge and primarily focused on winter migration. This does not match NIMSS designation of critical habitat as explained above and does not consider, um, that steelhead rely on summer base flows and rearing flows in or around the proposed project area. Move to the next slide, please. It's my opinion as well that the mitigation measures presented, uh, FIS one through FIS seven are inadequate to protect steel, uh, fish and wildlife resources, um, within the project area. Um, primarily, um, focusing on FIS number five and six and seven as FIS one through four are based primarily on the construction of the project itself. Five is the operation and the six and seven are for cumulative impacts. Um, first off, uh, FIS five, um, includes the creation of an operational pumping plan um, that would establish various restrictions to ensure that de-watering associated with groundwater pumping would not impact surface flows by the two thousand biological opinion. This, uh, I believe is, uh, logic is raises two primary concerns. Um, the first one is that, as Mr. Bush just presented on, um, the two thousand biological opinion is not considered the best available science within the San Inez River main stem. Within the two thousand sixteen draft biological opinion presented by National Marine Fisheries Service, they highlight the follow reasons for an update to the two thousand biological opinion. This is first off, the, uh, new information available, a series of technical memoranda that were published by NIMSS. Uh, the fact that the two thousand biological opinion did not consider the effects on smolts and, uh, juvenile immigration, uh, that the effects and the magnitude of sediment, uh, river discharge and sediment supply were not considered. Uh, that the operation and maintenance of the Teckalode Tunnel and South Coast Conduit Water Conveyance System were not concluded, and there is no consideration of climate change. Uh, the second concern raised with, uh, FIS number five is that the operational pumping plan, um, that is created is to ensure that de-watering associated with groundwater pumping would not impact surface flows as required by the two thousand biological opinion. The two thousand biological opinion sets a specific flow target at Alasol Bridge. So that is, it's unclear how an operational plan can protect surface flows throughout solving's proposed reach of diversion by meeting flow requirements that are at the Alasol Bridge when Site B impacts would be located further downstream. Sorry. Looking at, uh, mitigation measures, FIS six and FIS seven. FIS, FIS six discusses the need to coordinate with Alasol Guest Ranch and ID one regarding water demands and to coordinate with the San Inez River Water Conservation District for water rights releases. FIS six does not indicate what the goal or outcome of this coordination is or how it relates to the protection of in-stream flows, including for fisheries needs. FIS seven updates the conservation element of solving's general plan to include goals and policies that address cumulative effects. FIS seven also includes an offer to participate in regionally coordinated water management solutions, although the timing and coordination of said group is not provided. While these measures might provide future protections for steelhead, as written, uh, I do not believe the mitigation measures provide concrete actions that will minimize, avoid, or mitigate cumulative impacts to in-stream flows in the critical reach. We move to the next slide, please. Within the testimony of Mr. Gibson, um, they, uh, Mr. Gibson quotes the two thousand twenty-one biological assessment produced by the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation. Uh, this quote presented here, um, basically draws a conclusion in the last sentence, um, saying there has not been any observed changes in the movement or numbers of steelhead resulting from replenished ground, from replenished groundwater extractions. This statement appears to draw a linear connection between replenished groundwater extractions and steelhead populations. Uh, that connection is an oversimplification of the variety of factors that influence steelhead populations. Um, they have an extremely complicated, uh, life history. Uh, this can, this direct line between ground replenished groundwater levels and steelhead numbers does not consider the temporal or geographic scale of population changes and ignores other anthropogenic or natural factors that influence populations. For example, ocean conditions and large-scale environmental variations such as the Pacific Takeda Oscillation have been shown to directly impact the abundance and productive and productivity of some odd populations. Those effects, um, for example, are independent of groundwater levels. The expert testimony later, um, further on quotes the twenty twenty-one biological assessment as well and uh, quotes a sentencing substantial migration between the San Inez River and other regional steelhead populations. I went back and reviewed the twenty twenty-one, um, biological assessment, and they cite a two thousand six research paper by German and Garza as evidence of straying, um, and they basically justify this by saying that relatively high levels of gene flow exist, exist by, um, between basins separated by small coastlines. This is a mischaracterization of the research conducted by German and Garza. The two thousand six German and Garza and two thousand eight Garza and Clemento papers, and these are CDFW one oh five and CDFW forty-one, identify a general pattern of straining between watersheds through genetic analysis, but this string may have occurred or over a significant period of time. Uh, neither these of these papers provide any indication on stray rates between basins and provide no evidence on the impacts of S2R connectivity. Um, all they do is reference a general pattern, um, of historical and or ongoing mixing of populations through strays, but don't provide clear evidence in any way that supports the idea that steelhead may stray to another stream that is currently open for migration. We can move to the next slide, please. And then lastly, within the testimony of Mr. Gibson, um, it is stated that the monitoring reports, um, from the, uh, and on the monitor plans, operation of Kachuma Reservoir from two thousand eight to twenty-two, um, that, uh, have continued to create conditions in which fish are present in the San Inez River. Um, while this is correct, believe it to be misleading because the presence of omikus within the watershed uh, does not equate to the healthy status of a population. Um. The twenty twenty BA states that the river is being managed in accordance to the two thousand BO biological opinion, but this does not speak to the federally endangered status of steelhead uh, or the continued decline in population numbers for a species that existed a fraction of their historic numbers as kind of detailed within my case in chief testimony, CDFW exhibit three. Uh, and I believe that is the last slide, and that wraps up my rebuttal testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. I will turn now for cross-examination, um, Ms. O'Sullivan, do you have, or Mr. Kim? Looks like Mr. Kim, do you have questions for Mr. Evans?
Yes, I do, just a few.
Please go ahead.
Thank you, Officer Kinsey. And Ms. Mullen, um, if I can have you, uh, pull up and and have ready, uh, CDFW three, solving one oh three and CCRB one. And let me know when when you have those, um, ready, and I've, I believe CCRB one would be the the written rebuttal testimony of Joel Mulder.
And do you want one on the screen first, Mr. Kim?
Um, no.
Just ready, okay.
Ready, just to save time.
And I'm looking to my team, just give me a let me know, um, Ms. Mullen, when you're when you're ready with those exhibits.
And Ms. Mullen, uh, just in case, if you can also just have ready, uh, CDFW one oh three as well. Apology.
Great, we're ready. Go ahead, Mr. Kim.
Great, thank you. Good morning, Mr. Evans.
Morning.
Fine?
Yes, I can.
Great. So as a matter of introduction, my name is Tilden Kim. I'm one of the council for City of Solvang. Just gonna ask you just, um, several, um, questions. So I reviewed your rebuttal testimony and, um, as well as your direct testimony, and and it states that you have a, a, a BA in marine biology, right?
That's correct.
A- and you've been working as a fisheries biologist since two thousand eleven, is that correct?
That is correct.
And, um, nowhere in your rebuttal testimony does it states that, yeah, you're qualified, uh, hydrologist, correct?
That's correct.
A- and, um, you are not a certified hydrogeologist, correct?
That's correct.
And I reviewed your, um, both your, uh, uh, rebuttal testimony and your, um, direct testimony, and and nowhere in there does it say that you're a, an expert in sequel, you know what sequel is, right?
Uh, I do know what sequel is.
Right, and and you you don't claim to be an expert, uh, knowing the the sequel law, correct?
Uh, that is correct. I do not claim to be an expert in sequel. Uh, that is correct, I do not claim to be an expert in sequel.
And I'd like to direct you to, uh, paragraph four of your rebuttal testimony. And do you have that in front of you?
Uh, I do.
And so paragraph four of, uh, your rebuttal testimony. Uh, relies on, uh, the case in chief testimonies of, uh, yourself, uh, Brian Demuhon. Uh, William Trush and Richard Bush, correct?
That's correct.
And, and nowhere in your rebuttal testimony is, that does it state that you've done any peer review of, of those individuals, correct?
Um, I'm sorry, not quite sure I understand the question, um, or asking if I'd reviewed the. Exhibits that were referenced within paragraph four.
Um, let me just ask you this, Vivian, uh, do you know what a peer review is?
Yes.
Okay, and so have you done a peer review of the analysis done by those individuals?
I read through the, uh, example or the exhibits that were provided by those individuals. Um. When they were presented, but I did not provide, um, feedback on them.
A- and, and so by, uh, not providing any feedback, uh, then you haven't done any independent analysis of. Those direct testimonies of, uh, Mister Demuhon, Mister Trush, or Mister Bush, correct?
Objection, uh, ambiguous as to independent analysis.
I think it is. I think it is, and, uh, I'll sustain the objection because it is a little ambiguous to me, maybe Mister Kim, can you be more specific about, um? Or maybe take the witnesses one at a time, that may help too, um.
Officer Kinsey, I, I'll go ahead and, uh, withdraw the question.
Okay.
As I understand it, uh, Mister Evans just testified that, you know, he reviewed those prior testimonies and, uh. Didn't do much, if any, follow-up on his own, so that, that's fine for my, my purposes, uh, Officer Kinsey, so, uh, Mister Evans.
Uh, objection, uh, I believe that missed, uh, the witness's response.
I, and it's not a question, I mean, we can, I, I guess we can. Noted, I mean, it was not an evidentiary comment, so will not be used, it does not carry any evidentiary value, so.
I, I apologize if, if I mischaracterized Mister Evans's, uh, response to my question, uh, but I, I. But, uh, the record will state what he did.
Exactly, thank you, go ahead, Mister Kim.
Thank you. A- and so, uh, Mister Evans, you're aware that Mister Demuhon, uh, has since revised his testimony, noting certain, uh. Errors in his prior calculations, correct?
Uh, yes, I'm aware of that, believe that occurred after preparation of this rebuttal testimony by myself.
And you haven't prepared any sort of rebuttal, uh, changing any, um, of your opinions based upon that, uh. Rabbit testimony by Mister Demuhon, correct?
That's correct.
Ms. Mullen, if you can bring up, uh, C D F W, uh, exhibit three, please. And if we can zoom out just a little on the first page, so. You know what it is, so, so Mister Evans, uh, you're familiar with this, uh, document, right? This is your direct testimony?
Yes, it is.
And Ms. Mullen, if I can, uh, have you, uh, go to page twelve, I, I believe it's twelve page of his, uh. Testimony as well as the P D A page twelve. And if I can direct you to paragraph thirty-two, which is below that. Mister Evans, uh, let me know, uh, when you're done with, uh, reading the first two lines of paragraph thirty-two and then we can go to the next page.
Uh, yes, I've read them.
And this moment, if I can, yes, thank you. So Mister Evans, uh. You know what, uh, C O M B stands for, correct?
Yes, I do.
And that's the Kachuma Operations and Maintenance Board. A- and so, so based upon, uh, this testimony that you provided, you are aware that since implementation of the. Two thousand biological opinion, comb fishery staff have conducted a steelhead monitoring program at the San Ynez River.
Uh, yes, I am aware of the monitoring program that comb operates in the San Ynez River.
And, uh, if I can direct you to, uh, page fifteen, Ms. Mullen, if you can go to page fifteen. And then if I could direct you, Mister Evans, to, uh, paragraph thirty-seven, your testimony.
Yes.
I'll just give you a chance to, uh, review that and let me know when, once you're done.
Yes, reviewed paragraph thirty-seven.
A- and so, uh, y- you would agree that, that the combs, um, uh. Survey included, uh, snorkel surveys, right?
Uh, yes, I would agree that, uh, one component of the monitoring program. Uh, administered by the Kachuma Operations and Maintenance Board includes. Uh, uncalibrated single pass snorkel surveys.
A- and, and you would agree that, uh, snorkel surveys can help understand the abundance of fish at a particular life stage. At a particular reach. Correct?
I would agree that snorkel surveys can help understand, um, the abundance. Uh, at a particular life stage with noting that snorkel surveys are not a hundred percent accurate. And there are positives and negatives to the use of this type of survey. And to achieve accurate representations of abundance, uh, a secondary calibration method, uh, is recommended.
Thank you, Ms. Mullen, you can take that down and if we can go to Solvang one oh three. And then we, if we can zoom out for a little bit, just so we are familiar with this document. So Mister Evans, uh, solving one oh three is. The, uh, water year two thousand nineteen annual monitoring survey for the biological opinion for the operation and maintenance of the Kachuma Project. On the San Ynez River and is prepared by the Kachuma Operations Maintenance Board. And the stated January thirtieth, twenty, I'm sorry, January thirtieth, twenty twenty. I think if you zoom out just a little more, you can see the date on this. So Mister Evans, you're familiar with this document, are you?
Yes, I am.
And, uh, Ms. Mullen, if I can have you go to P D F page forty-seven. And if we can go to the next page. We can go to the next page. And how about the next page? So Mister Evans, uh. According to, uh, this document and the survey, uh, it included the, uh, Avenue of the Flags, correct?
Uh, yes, that's what it says here.
And Ms. Mullen, can we zoom in just a little bit on the Avenue of the Flags Reach? Thanks.
And it also included the, uh, Caldwell Reach, correct?
Uh, yes, that's what I see on the page.
And then, uh, for the Avenue of the Flags Reach, uh, near the, the bottom of, of that, uh. Paragraph, it states no omikus were observed within the Avenue of the Flags Reach during summer. Coran September and fall Coran November snorkel, snorkel surveys, do you see that?
I do see that.
A- and you don't have any reason to, uh, dispute, uh, that conclusion, correct?
Snorkel surveys, um, themselves have limitations on their effectiveness. Um, one limitation of conducting a snorkel survey is the chance to miss fish. In conditions that may not be ideal, such as poor water clarity, excessive, uh, aquatic vegetation or growth. Or extremely low abundance, uh, and this can also depend on the. Um, experience and qualifications of the surveyor conducting the snorkel survey, so I, there. They are not perfect surveys, so there's a chance that fish may have been there and not observed.
And, and thank you for that explanation, and I, I think you, you've stated that before and, and I think. Everyone understands, you know, some of the limitations of snorkel surveys, but if we can just, uh, try to just, you know, stick with my questions to make this go a little faster. So m- my question was, you, you just, you have no dispute as to that specific finding, correct?
That's correct.
And then if I can get you to, uh, the next paragraph regarding Caldwell Reach and similarly. Uh, farther down on that, uh, paragraph where it states, uh, no omikus were observed within the reach during any of the. Three W I two thousand nineteen surveys. And like other locations further stream, the majority of the reach was drying out with residual pool depth. Not being maintained during the summer and fall snorkel surveys, do you see that?
Yes, I do.
A- and once again, uh, you don't have any dispute as to that conclusion and then those observations, correct?
Uh, no, I, I do not doubt that during the three surveys conducted, uh, during that water year, that fish were not observed in that exact location.
A- and. So these surveys then, you know, include reaches downstream of the Alisal Bridge, correct?
Um, I believe so, uh, it would be potentially helpful to look at. This water report does include a map of the reaches that are sampled, it's my understanding that both of these reaches are downstream of the project area.
And, uh, Mister Evans, uh, you're aware of, uh, Mister Mulder? Do you know him? Of him?
Um, I. Have not worked with or met Mister Mulder, um, I had reviewed the, uh. Testimony that he provided in this case.
Okay, so that's Joel Mulder, uh, and, uh, he provided, uh, rebuttal testimony for C C R B, correct?
Yes.
A- and you, you just stated that you reviewed his rebuttal testimony, is that correct?
That is correct.
A- and Ms. Mullen, uh, if I could, uh, have you go to C C R B one, please? If we can zoom out just a little so we know what this document is. So this is the document that you were just referring to, is that correct, Mister Evans?
Uh, yes, it is.
And, uh, Ms. Mullen, if I could, uh, direct you to, uh, page nine of this document. Paragraph seventeen and eighteen, a little further down. Do you recall reading, uh, this portion of, uh, Mister Mulder's testimony?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and then if we can, um, go down a little further to the paragraph eighteen. So the surveys that, uh, Mister, uh, Mulder, uh, have referred to. Uh, you did not, uh, take into account, uh, those surveys and providing your rebuttal testimony, correct?
Which surveys are you referring to specifically in Mister Mulder's testimony?
So if we can go back up. Paragraph seventeen.
So the, are you referring to the based on historical information and recent monitoring data?
Yes.
Sentence?
Yes.
Yeah. And I'm sorry, could you rephrase or, um, repeat the question?
Oh, so, my question is basically, uh, the. Your rebuttal testimony, uh, did not include, uh, the. The historical information and then the recent monitoring data that Mister Mulder analyzed.
Uh, objection, it's not clear which, uh, specific, um, information and data Mister Kim is referring to. Based on this, uh, passage here.
I think that's fair in the sense that, I mean, it's, it's referenced in Mister Mulder's testimony, but, and I don't, we would. I'm trying to figure out how to address this because I don't want to take the time to go through all of it, but I also don't want to, uh, assume Mister Evans has them up at the top of his head. Um. I don't know, Mister Kim, if you have a proposal as to how to address this, whether there's a. A citation in Mister Mulder's testimony or a particular paragraph where he explains. Um. The information and monitoring data, as I recall, it was, there was a number of different sources.
Okay, uh, let me ask then this way, and I apologize, there's helicopters hovering all over the place here in downtown L A.
I can't hear them, so.
I can hear them, that's a little, a little distressing. Uh, uh, it's, it's, it's really wild, there's probably like twenty helicopters hovering over downtown L A right now.
Oh, my goodness.
Right, right around my office, so, uh, so, uh, Mister Evans, uh, uh. Am I correct in assuming that, uh, your analysis in your rebuttal testimony does not include any, uh. Uh, surveys in the last two decades on the river, uh, when evaluating the project's location. Uh, downstream of ring habitat identified in the two thousand biological opinion?
During preparation of my expert testimony, uh, I reviewed the, um. Monitoring reports put together by the Kachuma Operations and Maintenance Board, um, over the past two decades. Um, which includes areas, uh, up and downstream of the proposed project area. Uh, in addition to C D F W's data collected within the basin downstream of the project area. Um, from two thousand seventeen to present.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mister Kim. I will turn now to, uh, Mister Vivens for C C R B, do you have any questions for Mister Evans?
No questions for Mister Evans, thank you.
Thank you, and the parent district.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, I D number one.
No questions.
Thank you, and Alisal Guest Ranch.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Um, based on that cross-examination, um.
May, um, may I ask, may I ask a question?
Some feedback here, um, maybe I, uh. If you're able to check your, your mic, various mics, I think it's better.
Okay, um, well, only just one quick question, so. Uh, Mister Evans, I think it was around page five of your summary. And it had to do with characterization of habitat um from the two thousand biological opinion and from Joe Gibson's testimony. Um, do you happen to know exactly when? The National Marine Fisheries Service designated critical habitat for the Southern California steelhead population?
Um. That, I'm gonna object to that question. That wasn't part of my cross-examination.
And I think.
I'm not responding to your cross-examination. I'm responding to his summary of his testimony.
I think that's right. It's it's a Fred link. It's in some ways of of. I don't know if it's a friendly class question or not, but I think it's a fair question, and I'm going to, I'm going to allow the question if if Mr. Evans is able to respond, he can respond.
I'll go ahead and and object on that now grounds as well, Officer Kinsey, but uh.
Understood.
Um, yes. Uh, Ms. Beal, I believe that the designation of critical habitat um was completed in two thousand, the year two thousand.
Um, if I were to represent to you that it was designated in two thousand and five, would that sound correct to you? This would be shown in NIMPs um Exhibit Six.
Mr. Evans, we, are you saying, I can't tell if you're talking or not. We can't hear you.
Um, no.
What are you thinking? Now I can hear you.
I was just thinking. Sorry, uh, the, that would make sense to me. Um, I understand that the. Uh, listing process and consultation history that uh occurred. Uh, takes place in as many revisions, so it makes sense to me that the final designation of critical habitat was established in two thousand and five.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Um, and Mr. Kim, I will give you a chance. We will hear any redirect, but you you can ask questions about those questions if if. I'll consider that appropriate if you want to. Um. I will look to my team first, though. Mr. Wildridge or or Mr. Anderson, do you have any questions for Mr. Evans?
I do not.
I do not.
Thank you. Uh, then I will turn back um. To you, Mr. Minario, do you have redirect? For Mr. Evans?
Well, yes, just a few things.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, Mr. Evans, good morning. Um, so I'm gonna start with Mr. Kim's questions about um. Monitoring data. Uh, Ms. Mullin, if you could please uh pull pull up um CDFW three. At paragraph thirty seven fifteen. Team. Thank you. Uh, if you could, uh, maybe scroll down just a little bit. Okay, thank you. That's great. Okay, um, Mr. Evans, uh, Mr. Kim, uh, asked you some questions related to this uh. Testimony here. Um, he asked you questions of about. Come, uh, sorry, Kachuma Operations and Maintenance Board surveys including snorkeling. Do you recall that?
Yes, I do.
And I believe you responded, um, you know, noting. That yes, snorkeling was done, and this can help uh with understanding abundance. Do you recall that?
Yes, I do.
Is there anything more you would want to say about um? The why snorkeling may have limitations uh for understanding abundance?
Um, yes, uh, for. Uh, several of the reasons that I I mentioned earlier, the accuracy of uh snorkel surveys. Can depend on a number of factors such as the snorkeler experience, the conditions, um, the habitat. Uh, size and depth of the water clarity, the amount of cover. Um, the. Department of Fish and Wildlife within our steelhead management um and monitor and program. Uh, follows the best available published science and recommending that snorkel surveys are calibrated with some sort of. Uh, additional survey so that you, such as electrofishing uh or a mark recapture or something like that. So you can try to get at the most accurate uh representation of fish that are there. Um, one. One of the drawbacks to doing single pass snorkel surveys, like I mentioned, is the chance to undercount um fish. And in paragraph thirty seven. Uh, one of the reasons that instead of looking at total number of fish that were counted during the snorkel surveys. Um, I followed uh what National Marine Fisheries Service did within their uh two thousand twenty-three five-year status review. And looking at the density um of fish that were found, because the Kachuma Operations and Maintenance Board did not snorkel. A hundred percent of the habitat uh or the San Ynez River. Um, they snorkel individual reaches, so as a way to kind of. Normalize that data instead of looking at a total count, it was looking at the amount of fish within, you know, a certain string distance.
Very much, and you mentioned in your answer that just there factors that can affect. Um, accuracy, I think you mentioned cover and qualifications of the um surveyors. Uh, do you believe any of those specific factors may have been at issue here in the survey?
Um, I wasn't, uh, I was not present during the surveys. Um, I have conducted snorkel surveys. Um, within the Santian as river and other streams around Santa Barbara County, so I'm familiar with conditions that may be experienced during a survey. Um, I would say that based on my experience conducting snorkel surveys, um, having a. Excessive amounts of cover or uh algal growth within the stream itself um can make identification of fish extremely difficult. So those could be potential factors, but as I mentioned, I was not um present during those surveys.
And you did also just mention uh the benefits of calibration. So to your knowledge, uh, there, I'm sorry, to your knowledge, that kind of calibration via um. Marking or electrofishing was not conducted for this particular survey, correct?
Uh, that is my understanding, yes.
Okay, uh, and then moving on, uh, Ms. Mullin, if you could take this one down and move to solving one oh three. Or share solving one oh three on the screen. Thank you. Uh, thank you. Great. Okay, and I think you're at the correct page. You, and so, Mr. Evans, uh, Mr. Kim asked you some questions about this. Uh, exhibit in particular, the observations of zero steelhead during these two thousand nineteen surveys. Do you remember that?
Yes, I do.
And um. In your opinion, as a biologist, what does the lack of presence of uh steelhead in these surveys indicate?
Um, to me, this would indicate uh that we uh have a. Um, extremely uh imperil population um of, oh my guess. Um, that they there. That fish would be extremely low numbers, um, an extremely patchy distribution. Um, within the watershed on. Based on the description provided uh within the avenue of flags reach uh here. It does say that. Although historically altering the river bottom, the half downstream half of the reach consists of mature unaltered riparian canopy. Um, to me, this may be an indication of high-quality habitat in the area. Um. In my professional opinion, the lack of omikus is most likely a representation of impacts on the population. Um. Following years of uh periodic and extreme drought.
And Officer Kinsey, I'm gonna uh object and ask that that testimony be stricken. My my cross-examination was just asking him whether he had any reason to believe that those observations. Were incorrect, and he answered, no, I I didn't, you know, I'll go into any inquiry as to what the inferences are or or. You know, from uh that observation.
I I I'm, will sustain that objection and strike the the testimony. I think that's true. Mr. Mr. Evans did testify, but it was outside of the scope of your question. Um, with respect to some of these issues, so we will strike that testimony. I'll look back to you, Mr. Minaria.
Yeah, if I could reframe it to be more specific. So Mr. Kim pointed you to the observations of zero steelhead um during these surveys. And you responded uh that, you know, these efforts uh have some limits, snorkeling efforts have some limits. And you described some of the factors there. Is there anything in particular? You want to add? You just described a bit earlier some of the limitations, but based on this particular. Uh, passage here, do you want to um explain more any of the limits that may have affected the numbers seen?
The same objections. Mr. Evans, you know, just, you know, testified, you know, in my cross-examination that he didn't have any, you know, a a issue with that observation, and so. Uh, and, you know, these, this line of questioning is is far beyond the cross-examination and the response that Mr. Evans gave.
I think I will sustain it again. I think Ms. German area, I also, we have testimony on this issue, and I think I understand the point, so if we can move on to the next issue. Thank you.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Uh, yeah, that's all the questions we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Germanario. I will look back to you, uh, Mr. Kim. Do you have any uh? Recross based either on Ms. Germanario's questions or Ms. Beal's questions?
No further questions, Officer Kinsey.
Thank you. With that, I believe I can, uh, thank you, Mr. Evans. Thank you for joining us. Once again, I really appreciate you taking the time and to testify and and join us here this morning. With that, you are excused for the morning. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would like to, before we turn to CCRB, which I believe is the next uh item on the list, which uh an opening statement from CCRB, I do want to take a break, but before we break. Is there anything else that we should address procedurally before we move to CCRB?
Um, hi, Ms. Kinsey. Maybe I just missed this when I um was not here for the first ten minutes, but did we say when we were gonna do the offers of exhibits for NIMPs and?
I I I think what I said, but what I emphasize is I want to make sure that we get through um the the witnesses today. And if we have time at the end of the day, we will, we will get into offers of exhibits. Um. And if we don't, we are anticipating scheduling another hearing day. I mean, we're moving along pretty quickly, which is good, but I I was focusing on the the um. Getting through the witnesses today.
Understood. Thank you for that clarification. Apologies for the the repeat.
No, no, that's 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 just fine. Thank you. Um. All right, let's go ahead and take a, we'll do an eleven-minute break, and we'll come back at ten fifty-five, and I will be looking to you, Mr. Vivens, for. Uh, if if you would like, and now you've alluded to it, an opening statement from CCRB.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and get started again. I see you're here, Mr. Bivins. So with that, I think I will turn things over to you. If you have, do you have an opening statement for CCRB that you'd like to present at this time?
I do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me see if I can hide myself view here. That's it's hard to, I find it distracting to see myself on camera while I'm talking at the same time. Maybe that maybe that's narcissism, but all right. So thank you, Hearing Officer Kinsey, and good morning. Just for the record, my name is Sam Bivins. I'm an attorney representing the Kachuma Conservation Release Board in this matter. I just first want to thank you and your staff for your work on this hearing. It's presented complicated and important issues, and we appreciate your attention to those issues and for keeping us organized along the way. So what I'd like to do in this short opening statement is to just briefly clarify CCRB's position per your request earlier in the hearing, and then summarize the key facts and the evidence and the record that's relevant to those positions. And so there are basically two major issues presented by Sullivan's petition from CCRB's perspective. One, what are the impacts of Solvang's proposed change in its point of diversion on listed steelhead? And two, what are the effects of Solvang's petition on the availability of water from the Kachuma Project? Our position on the first issue is that any impacts that may arise are relatively minor. But we don't believe that there is evidence sufficient to support a finding by the State Water Board that the increased diversion solving is contemplating under its petition would not injure the Kachuma Project water rights or effectively initiate a new water right. And so I'll discuss four key facts that support each of those positions. Excuse me. So first, the evidence shows that all of the things being equal, moving solving's diversion downstream of Alisal Bridge is not likely to impact listed steelhead or their spawning and rearing habitat in and of itself. Both historical scientific information and modern data show that steelhead do not typically spawn rear in the reach of the San Inez River where solving's wells would be located, especially in the drier years when solving has indicated it would divert more water under permit 15878 than has historically. And as Joel Mulder will testify, and Mr. Mulder is a biologist with substantial experience with steelhead in the San Inez River, any minimal potential impacts of steelhead in that reach that would be caused by solving's project can be effectively mitigated with modest conditions that are consistent with Order 2019148. Second, solving plans to increase its diversions under permit 15878 if its petition is granted. And the record is full of evidence that proves this point. For example, in AHO 12, after having already granted one extension of time to solving, the Division of Water Rights conducted a compliance inspection that determined the maximum use under permit 15878 was 1,053 acre feet per year at a rate of 1.85 CFS. And since that time, solving's diversions from the San Inez River alluvium have decreased even further. At Exhibit 121 specifically, solving has admitted that it's diverted no more than 464 acre feet per year from the San Inez River since it began taking deliveries of state water project water in 2002. So an increase in diversions to 1,368 acre feet per year represents a substantial increase. And aside from agreements that it voluntarily entered to limit its diversions, there's no concrete evidence in the record that solving was unable to divert more water from the alluvium between 2002 and today. Third, solving has not presented evidence sufficient to show that expanding its diversions from the San Inez River would avoid reductions in water available from the Kachuma Project. Solvang's own hydrogeology expert admitted that his injury analysis is focused on the river wells projects impacts on other alluvial pumpers downstream of the Kachuma Project. And the only evidence in the record that purports to analyze the impacts of solving's increased diversions on the Kachuma Project, Stetson Technical Memorandum Number Six, is woefully out of date. It's testimonial hearsay. And it admits that solving's project will require increased releases of water from the Kachuma Project to the main stem to satisfy those diversions, where they cannot be diverted and used by my clients' members. And solving has also submitted no evidence whatsoever showing that the water needed to satisfy these increased diversions would be available for diversion under natural unregulated conditions. Fourth, and finally, solving's existing water supplies are more than sufficient to meet its reasonable future requirements. The evidence shows that solving's calculation of its future demands fails to account for past and future conservation and exceeds the reasonable needs of its residents. And the best example, I think, is in solving Exhibit 129, which assumes future demand of 232 gallons per capita per day, even though actual use in recent years has been consistently and significantly lower than that and declined over time. Solvang's population growth projections for purposes of its water supply planning are also admittedly higher than the projections used in other planning documents. So the upshot is that solving has not shown that it reasonably needs to increase its use of water from the river wells to meet future needs such that it can rely on an area of origin argument to avoid the rule of priority here. So to paraphrase Mr. Nicely's, something Mr. Nicely said at the end of last week. At the end of this hearing, you're going to have to decide whether solving is going to get a free lunch. And if the Kachuma Project member units like the ones I represent are going to pay for it. And in our view, there's no evidence in the record that could justify that type of outcome. So that concludes my opening statement. And with that, we are ready to call our first witness, if you are, Ms. Kinsey.
Thank you. Now you can hear me. Trying to figure out how to phrase this question. I would like to hear your articulation which of of injury and with respect to the permit term, the term in the Kachuma like the Kachuma permit that requires release of certain amounts for to, and I don't have it in front of me. It's I should, but you know, the term I'm referring to about release of sufficient water to meet natural recharge conditions. And I was wondering if you would articulate your understanding of what that term requires.
The our our understanding of what that term requires, and I don't think there's any surprise here, is that reclamation's obligation to make water rights releases for downstream needs that aren't senior vested water rights are limited to the amount that would otherwise percolate into the San Inez River alluvium under natural conditions.
And by under natural conditions, you mean without any pumping?
Without, no, no, without the without the existence of the Kachuma Project and the and the regulated releases of of water that it makes that tend to increase the amount of percolation into the alluvium.
So as a factual matter, and this may be a question of burden of proof, but is it, let me phrase it this way, is it your position that solving has not submitted sufficient evidence to show that the amount of their proposed pumping with approval of the change in point of diversion would be within the natural percolation amount?
That's correct. And particularly because it's it's expansion of its diversions represents the initiation of a new water right. They can't simply go back and and rely on the findings that were made in decision, what is it, 86 and I want to say 1337.
Hearing Officer Kinsey, I don't know if this is the time, but we had discussed earlier in the proceeding, the parent district offering a short opening statement of a sort before we get into this issue, but I I would imagine we could hold that until before Mr. Van Linden testifies because he's really testifying about that issue. But I I would just like to make sure I get the chance to address some of what's being said.
Thank you, Mr. Stroud. I appreciate that reminder. I'm going to ask you, once I'm done with my questions, I'm, we'll go around the room. How about that? So let's hear from an opening statement. And I think this is really helpful for me. So I appreciate everyone's patience. Ms. Sullivan, do you have something additional to add?
I just wanted to request an opportunity at some point today for the city to respond on this issue because since CCRB did not present any direct witnesses, the city did not have this issue before it when it was presenting its own opening statement. And therefore, you know, I would request that we have an opportunity to orally respond as well.
Yes, and I will grant that. This is helpful for me too. So thank you. Back to you, Mr. Bivins. Now you've alluded to it a couple of times. Will you please elaborate on the the CCRB's theory about the change petition effectively resulting in the initiation of a new water right? What is your theory there?
Certainly. So the the in, I want to say, 1999, the Division of Water Rights conducted a compliance inspection that found that solving's maximum beneficial use under its permit was 1,053 acre feet per year at a rate of 1.84 CFS. That's also, by the way, the baseline used in their environmental analysis. That determination has never been challenged. Solving has withdrawn its petition for extension of time to further maximize its beneficial use. So that really ought to be the baseline starting point of what the scope of its water right is under permit 15878. And then that the scope of that water right should be determined to be even lower than that based on solving's actual use between 2002 and the present day. It has not used more than 464 acre feet per year. There are many, many other water rights users, including the Bureau of Reclamation or the Kachuma Project that have been able to put the water that solving hasn't used to beneficial use. And so solving's, the scope of solving's existing permit is considerably lower than the 1,368 acre feet per year that they're requesting through this proceeding. And it represents the initiation of a new water right.
So is it your position that even absent a revocation proceeding, as we have not had one here, and this is not a revocation proceeding, when the State Water Board is assessing a petition for change where the of a permit that the the board should limit diversions to the historical maximum use or maybe even the recent historical use?
No, that's that's not, that's not necessarily my position. My, our our position is that you know, regardless of whether there's a revocation proceeding or not, a water right is limited by the amount of beneficial use and the, you know, various legal doctrines like forfeiture, abandonment and reasonable and beneficial use. There, you know, those are, those are inherent limitations. And in order to determine whether or not a a petition for change falls within the scope of a water right or constitutes the initiation of a new water right, particularly in a situation like here where solving is specifically requesting an acre foot per year amount that's higher than what it determined its baseline to be, that the State Water Board needs to look at the full scope of the water right in line with those, you know, fundamental principles of California law.
And I I'm going to push on this. Thank you for humoring me. I know this is on the fly. This is sort of fundamental principle, speaking of fundamental principles of California law. So maybe a little background. I practiced once upon a time in Colorado and and Colorado does this where every time you you file a change petition of for a for a water right, at least a vested one, there they have conditional water rights and vested water rights, not permits and licenses. But when you file a change, seeking a change for a vested water right, the amount of the change is limited to the recent historical use. And there's debates about what that is. So they do that just as a matter of practice because you don't have an agent, it's there, it's it's different. You don't have an agency who's operating with permits and licenses. My understanding of California law is that a permit is essentially the equivalent of a conditional water right, which allows for My understanding of California law is that a permit is essentially the equivalent of a conditional water right, which allows for, um, the development of the right during the permit term. Now, I understand here we have an expiration of the permit term uh and no petition to, um, no petition to extend the time period for full development of of the right. Um, and then we have this maximum historical use. So I guess maybe one way to phrase the question for you is that does your argument turn on the fact that solving has not petitioned or has withdrawn its petition for extension of time?
It doesn't part.
Okay.
But not entirely. And these are all, you know, concepts I would I would expect you'll find in our in our closing brief. I wasn't wasn't necessarily intending to do, uh, oral legal argument here on the fly in an opening statement. Neither Ms. Sullivan nor Mr. Stroud was either, although although perhaps, but, um, you can't expect that we'll we'll brief these issues in some more detail.
Yes, yes. No, I expect that, and this is helping me think about these things. Um, I think that oh, I've I've one more question. Once again, it's this is on the fly, so you know, you can address these later. My understanding is that solving's, and I could be wrong, but solving's water right is, um, relative to some of the other permits on the stream system, such as, I think, now I don't recall if it's the parent district or ID number one who holds the right, or maybe they both do, but that solving's permit is relatively senior. Uh, I don't know if you know this on the fly, but i- in that case, when we're thinking about the amount of natural recharge that the Kachuma Project that the the Bureau is obligated to release, um, shouldn't the water available under that natural recharge term go in order of priority? Does that make sense that if solving should get first dibs on the amount of water released for natural recharge? And before any junior permit holders? Does that make sense?
I I understand what you're asking, and I and I think my answer would be up up to the scope of what its existing actual water right is. The issue here is solving is proposing the initiation of a of a new water right. Uh, and so that that increase uh in diversions from the alluvium would go to the back of the line. Um, I'll note that there's one, I think, peculiarity, uh, about all of this, which is that at least with respect to ID one and solving, uh, and and I'm speaking about, um, ID number one's, uh, water right license from, I want to say, the seventies, that's that's junior, junior to, uh, solving's permit, that solving solving has agreed not to uh assert, uh, that it's water right, uh, both, both, both parties have agreed not to assert priority over one or the other. So there are, you know, peculiarities of of the system and the way that it operates that uh make it a little bit more challenging to tease some of these issues out.
Thank you. Um, and then for clarity, is it, does CCRB object to solving's change petition with respect to um, the amount of recent historical use? I I don't think that's been characterized, but is there is there some subset of this change petition to which CCRB does not object approval of?
We don't, we don't object to the move of the river wells downstream in and of itself. Um, and and you'll hear from, you'll hear from Mr. Mulder that, you know, to the extent there are any impacts from solving's project on the on the fishery, we think those can be mitigated by very, very modest conditions on, um, any order granting solving's change petition. But in and of itself, I think the we think the the move, moving the wells downstream is fine. It's the it's the substantial increase in, uh, diversions that they're requesting, both compared to, uh, historical use over the last twenty years, um, as well as, uh, the one thousand fifty-three measured uh beneficial use, uh, from the compliance inspection.
Thank you. I've 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 for now exhausted my questions. I really appreciate, um, you taking those and addressing them as best you can at this time on the fly. I think it would make sense to me, I know this is not typical, but it would make sense to me to hear from Mr. Stroud and and any others on this topic, since we're talking about it before we turn to CCRB's witnesses. So that's what I plan to do. Um, Mr. Stroud, if you would like to make an opening statement for the parent district at this time, please, um, go ahead.
I will do that, and thank you for the opportunity, and Mr. Bivins mentioned that we can't really sort of verbally brief this whole thing for you. He's exactly right. We will definitely be submitting a lot more in the briefs. I I have here my binder. This is only State Water Board orders on the San Inez River, the the whole binder of just those. A lot of that history is relevant, but I'm going to try to do at the high level what the important history is that affects this issue of the water rights releases. And just for context, the the parent district's primary function is to administer that water right release regime. So that's that's our interest in this proceeding. The first order that you need to know about on the San Inez River is this, uh, D eight eight six, which is the decision first authorizing the Kachuma Project. And the premise of the Kachuma Project was that it was intended to capture some of the water that would otherwise have wasted to the ocean. And it would not be taking water that would have otherwise replenished the downstream, which would have basically prevented the development of that area, which was still developing and needed to rely on the San Inez River as its primary source of water. Uh, shortly before eight eight six, the parent district was formed to protect those downstream interests, and we we participated in that proceeding. Obviously, I did not, but the parent district did. Um. The the next order that's relevant is actually Decision thirteen thirty-eight, which is the decision that originally granted the permit that solving is seeking to modify. And in that decision, the members who now comprise CCRB appeared and objected that a later in time appropriation could not be replenished from their senior permit having to release water. And the board rejected that argument with regard to this very permit. Subsequently, in this, in Water Right Order seventy-three dash three seven, the system got a little more complicated. Uh, instead of what was called the live stream arrangement, where where Kachuma was basically required to keep a live stream south of the downstream of the dam, we switched to this, uh, above Narrows Account, below Narrows Account, Water Right Release System. And trying to explain that system in detail here would be a futile exercise. I will try in the brief to do a little bit more thorough a job, but it's quite complicated. What you need to know for this purpose is that when there isn't a live stream below the dam, water accrues to the above Narrows Account, which the parent district administers releases from to replenish the aquifer above the Lompoc Narrows. Basically, to provide for these downstream users who are protected by this arrangement of the board. Now, subsequently, that system was modified in minor ways in this in Water Right Order eighty-nine dash one eight. But that basic system continues to this day. And an important dispute about it came in Decision fourteen eighty-six. In Decision fourteen eighty-six, other water right petitions, uh, to the board, I think, including ID one's petition, if I remember. Basically, the CCRB appeared to make the same argument it had in thirteen thirty-eight, that a junior appropriator can't be protected by this above Narrows Account. They 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 are the senior right, and they can't be prejudiced by what happens with further appropriations downstream, essentially only vested rights are to be protected by the water right releases. Uh, the state board clearly rejected that proposition in Decision fourteen eighty-six, and CCRB sought reconsideration of that. And in a subsequent order, and this is the one I didn't have the number for in my notes, seventy-nine dash one six, the board made very clear the basis for its decision. In fourteen eighty-six, it said the decision to withhold that water from appropriation in the above Narrows Accounting Procedure was a public interest determination under the Water Code. It it relies on the public policy principle behind the Area of Origin statute, though not actually the Area Area of Origin statute itself, it's the same principle. And in its reconsideration order seventy-nine dash one six, the board made clear that water that accrues to the above Narrows Account is not Kachuma Project yield. They are not being asked to release Kachuma Project water in order to supply downstream users. That is water that never attaches to the Kachuma Project's rights. It's water that was withheld from their appropriation pursuant to a public interest determination. Now, that's that's a lot of the complicated history. Where we stand now is the court, the the board's most recent order, uh, twenty nineteen dash zero one four eight incorporated the eighty-nine dash eighteen Water Right Release Regime in toto, subject to some minor technical agreement, uh, amendments that CCRB and the parent district and others agreed to. That is now, that that is still the Water Right Release Regime on the river. And there is a process in that order for future studies, particularly studies in wet years to determine how the Table Two flows will affect that system. And the board has reserved jurisdiction to potentially modify that system in the future. But that is the system the board has approved. The parties agreed to support that order in a two thousand and two settlement agreement, including its, uh, you know, the future studies that need to be done. And ultimately, what's happening in this proceeding is CCRB is trying to reexamine that whole water right release regime in the context of this relatively minor change petition by the City of Solvang. So the parent district's position that we will elaborate more fully in our brief is that what you're going to see from CCRB's witnesses is that there might be some minor decrease in Kachuma Project yield from this project, perhaps. If so, it will be in the form of slightly increased water rights releases. But those water right releases are not an injury to a water right held by the Kachuma Project. The Kachuma Project water rights never attach to water that that accrues to the ANA account. And under the terms of the current order, that water accrues to the ANA account. Um, that might change in the future, but it will not change in the context of this proceeding. Solvang's project will not affect the Kachuma Project permits. It doesn't, we don't have the parties here to have that discussion. So in in short, what's happening in this proceeding is a repeat of arguments that have been made three or four times before the board and always rejected. And it's also an attempt to rush ahead and reexamine a system that is not within the scope of this proceeding.
Thank you, Mr. Stroud. I'm going to try to ask a question. We'll see. I like articulated, just to make sure I understand your position.
I hope I have an answer for you. We'll see.
Well, you're right, and all this is fair to say, uh, to tell me that you will brief this in more detail in your closing brief. Um. It sounds to me, and I'm going to allow Mr. Bivins to comment on this, too, well, all of you. It sounds to me like there may not be a disagreement about the meaning of um, the requirement in the Kachuma Project's permit for releases to replenish, uh, percolation to replenish, uh, natural, the amount to the extent that it would naturally occur. Um. I realize this is a change in the position of CCRB as expressed in the orders that you referenced. I think you mentioned seventy-nine sixteen as one where the board articulated a detailed response to that argument. I'm going to ask Mr. Bivins to 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 clarify his position. But I wanted to ask you, Mr. Stroud, to make sure that I'm on the right track, that if let's, can we talk about a hypothetical lawyers, like, I know it's, but let's do a hypothetical. Hypothetically speaking, um, the the river valley is overlying landowners start growing, I don't know what, something, a highly, um, water-dependent crop, and they start pumping like crazy, these overlying users, so they're senior, they start pumping like crazy. In that scenario, um, where the pumping exceeds, um, we have a an expansion in the pumping amount, and that scenario, do you agree that there'd be a situation where the Kachuma Project was would not be required to release as much water as a as the amount that's being pumped um, from the underflow?
Let me, let me address that this way. Um, what the Kachuma Project is required to release is determined by the terms of the order. And the eighty-nine dash one eight release regime is in the current order. The function of that regime is to implement the public interest determination. And there is a conceivable state of facts where downstream use could increase beyond what would have been the natural recharge to the basin. And the board has said that the purpose of this is to maintain that natural recharge. So in that circumstance, I think what the board would want to do is amend the Water Right Release Regime to to achieve the reality of of actually imitating the natural recharge. But it would have to be done through amending the eighty-nine eighteen conditions that are incorporated in O one four eight. Um.
Okay.
It's a, let's just say that whether or not we ever achieve that condition will be an extremely hydrologically complicated proposition. And if it's ever going to be adjudicated, it's going to be in a revisiting of the Kachuma Project Order, not in, you know, every little permit or change petition that comes before the board in the interim.
Okay, that that's extremely helpful. I think I missed, maybe misunderstood, that helped clarify my understanding of your position. So it's your position that the uh, accounting regime, this above Narrows Accounting Regime, that is, it that is, um, the board adopted in eighty-nine eighteen is what is required from the Kachuma Project. Um, it was there to implement this public interest requirement, but that is the legal requirement. And so whatever the terms of that that you, it's been, I realize it's complicated. I tried looking, I have looked at it. Uh, but whatever the terms are of that complicated regime, that should be understood to be what is required of Kachuma. And, um, Kachuma cannot defend Kachuma is required, the Kachuma Project is required to make those releases unless and until there has been a demonstration that those requirements exceed the natural recharge and the permits are amended.
Yes, and and just just like nothing that we do in this proceeding could require a greater or lesser amount of fish releases than is required in the current Kachuma Project permit, it also can't vary the water rights release regime.
And I I would like to, I would like to briefly respond to that.
I, and I want you to as as well, so we're on the same page. But thank you, Mr. Stroud. I really appreciate you answering my questions. I'm going to turn back to you, Mr. Bivins, for the for the rest of the room. I am going to come to you. Um, but, uh, so I appreciate your patience and working through these conversations, but, Mr. Bivins, please, um, if you can help me understand, I'm trying to understand, as you may have gotten to, I'm trying to understand whether there is a legal dispute, which it sounds like now there there is. I thought maybe we were close together, but the I'm trying to understand the legal dispute here as well as the what might be a factual dispute about, um, the amount of natural recharge. So I'm trying to tease those out. So please go ahead.
So I think the first, the first important thing to remember is that in all the talk of these orders from the fifties and the sixties and the seventies and the eighties, we we have a a Water Right Order from twenty nineteen that addresses this Water Rights Release Regime. And I think it's pretty telling that there is absolutely no discussion in that, uh, water order about the future needs of downstream, uh, increased diversions. There is a, there's a substantial amount of discussion about how the eighty-nine eighteen release regime uh, is sufficient to protect vested, uh, senior downstream water rights. But the the board seems to have, uh, moved away in more modern times, uh, from this focus on the amount of water needed to support, uh, future development of the San Inez Valley. And I I think that's, you know, appropriate because the San Inez Valley has had uh, since the Kachuma Project was permanent, uh, permitted, what are we, how many years are we away from? Sixty-eight, sixty-eight years since Decision eighty-six was granted? Uh, and in that vein, it's also important to note in my my second point, uh, and, Mr. Stroud, you know, alluded to this, uh, to be fair, the this this release regime that was discussed in eight eighty-six, thirteen eighty-six, uh, and, um, fourteen, thirteen, sorry, eight eighty-six, thirteen thirty-seven, and fourteen eighty-six, uh, was based on a public interest determination. Uh, there is no application of the Area of Origin statutes to the Kachuma Project or the San Inez River in general. Um, and as you know, Ms. Kinsey, the State Water Board is ultimately going to need to make a determination uh, about whether solving's increased diversions uh, and their effects on the Kachuma Project are also in the public interest. So I would, I would disagree with the notion that, um, that the state, you and the State Water Board have no authority. That the state, you and the state water board have no authority to look at how Solvang's, uh, pumping may affect operations of the Kachuma Project. You, you have a duty to do so under that public interest determination.
I don't want to, I don't want to make it a back and forth. If I could add one or two comments, uh, at, at your, uh, at your pleasure.
Uh, uh, I, let me ask a question, Mr. Bivens first. Let's see, if I can articulate this. My understanding, um. Of the position of CCRB in. Uh, I believe Mr. Stroud referenced the order as seventy-nine sixteen. I'll, I'll take his word for it, but that, that era of the order, um, which was a, I think, an order on petition for reconsideration from CCRB. Uh, with respect to. Their, uh, the obligation of the Kachuma Project to make water rights releases. Um, my understanding is that CCRB's position today. Is not asking the state water board to. Further reconsider that decision, but you intend CCRB's position today to be consistent with that decision. Is that accurate? But there's been a change in position by CCRB about legal requirements.
So I don't, I don't know that I am prepared to characterize CCRB's position today vis a vis, uh, Water Rights Order seventy-nine. Uh, what I, what I can tell you is that, um. CCRB i- is, is not asking the state, you or the state water board. Uh, to reconsider, um, the notion that. Uh, in decision eight eighty-six. Uh, that the Kachuma Project was required to make, uh, downstream water rights releases. That would be sufficient to satisfy. The, uh, requirements for future development in the San Inez Valley. I would not say that it's our position that, you know, that public interest determination. You know, goes on forever, or that the obligation to do that is unlimited. And in fact, decision eight eighty-six is, is very clear that the, the limit is to natural percolation. Uh, and that was explained, uh, in subsequent orders.
Thank you, Mr. Bivens. That's helpful. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Stroud, please, if you have a, a brief comments, go ahead.
And I, and I'll keep it brief because you're going to get briefing on this subject. I don't want to spend everybody's time, but I think this is an important thing to note. Mr. Bivens said that twenty nineteen dash oh, one, four, eight doesn't, doesn't discuss the, the need for development of downstream uses. Uh, you'll find that it doesn't address the Water Right Release, Release Regime much at all, though there is some helpful history summarized there. The reason for that is that during the very long pendency of the Kachuma Project hearing. CCRB, the parent district and others reached a settlement agreement signed in two thousand and two. And the, the premise there is basically, CCRB believed that because of. Changes to the project order, including these fish releases when they were first imposed. There was going to be an uncompensated benefit to the downstream, which is what the board did not intend to grant. Uh, we, we took the position that it would not result in that. And the parties agreed to a settlement that was designed to maintain sort of the status quo. Of water rights releases and prevent. The downstream interest from taking advantage of the fish releases in a way that was inappropriate. So basically, the board didn't do a lot of considering the Water Right Release regime in oh, one, four, eight, because the parties who were interested in that agreed regarding that regime.
And I will just say that Mr. Stroud's use of the word status quo is pretty important there.
Fair. And then Mike, I have one fact, just factual follow-up question, and this really maybe is for, for solving, but I'll ask you first, Mr. Stroud. Was the city of solving a party to that, to, to that agreement regarding the flow regime? Do you recall?
Question.
Cause I thought I looked at it and I didn't think they were, but.
It's an appendix to oh, one, four, eight.
I'm sure we can figure it out.
Solving, solving is not, I will represent that solving is not a party to that agreement, I think.
Yeah, I think you're right. Yeah, that's correct. Uh.
Okay.
It was the parent district ID one, the city of Lompoc and reclamation, I believe, and CCRB.
Reclamation actually was, was not a party to that agreement, but they, I think, I think the position that they took in the Water Right hearings. In like two thousand and two is that they didn't, they didn't object.
You're right, you're right. They didn't actually sign the agreement, but they, they didn't mind it.
Yes, acquiescence.
All right. Thank you. Thank you to both of you. I, I appreciate that. I will turn to, um. I'm trying to think of what makes sense. Maybe first I, I will, before I get to solving. Well, no, let's go ahead. The, Mrs. Sullivan, if you would like to comment on any of the issues we've discussed, please go ahead.
Uh, you know, for the, the issue of. CCRB's legal injury, I think Mr. Stroud addressed that and the city will certainly be addressing it in its closing brief. So I don't want to take additional time here, but suffice to say that we agree with the, uh, interpretation that Mr. Stroud put forward. Um, and then, uh, as far as. You know. Well, I guess I'll just leave it at that. We will be addressing. Mr. Bivens' arguments in our, our closing brief. Um, but you know, our, our, our position is the city does have a current valid permit. And, um, we have been putting water under that permit to beneficial use since its issuance. And, um, you know, we'll, we'll make further arguments on, on that front in our closing brief, but wanted to, to note our concurrence with Mr. Stroud's, uh, interpretation.
Thank you. Mr. Kim, did you have anything to add? I noticed you're off mute. You. You may, if you'd like to.
Sure. Thank you, Officer Kinsey. Uh, I just wanted to reiterate, uh, the revisiting of, uh. The issue of, uh, page limits on briefs, Officer Kinsey. Uh, I, I don't think you've issued a ruling on that and. And I, and I, you know, voiced, uh, you know, our concerns about it before and, and, and I'll voice it again, especially for the city of Solvang. You know, we have to, uh, in our closing brief, uh, address the, the specific issues that, you know, you have raised. Um, and, and, uh, you know, we, we have to also address the proposed permit terms. You know, that the remaining, uh, protesters have submitted. And, and also, uh, these, uh, CCRB issues. That, uh, were not contemplated when, uh, you had, uh. Issued your preliminary, uh, ruling on, on page limits. So those are substantial, in my opinion. And, and, and then I was looking at the, the list of. Uh, witnesses that the city, uh, has to address in its closing brief. Uh, by my count, there are a, a total of eight witnesses, uh, you know. Both their direct and rebuttal. Uh, and so those are substantial and, and, and I'm not suggesting that, you know, the, the longer brief gets a better result. I think e- every lawyer appreciates that, um, you know, getting to the point, uh, you know, i- is more effective than, you know, just, you know, going on and on. But, uh, they're, they're certainly, you know, given the, the number of issues, the breadth and complexity of the issues and the, and the factual and legal issues. I, I just find it very difficult to, to see how, um, that, you know, solving could address all those issues in twenty pages. So, um, I, I certainly, uh, request that you reconsider the issue of page limits for the city. Uh, as, uh, as you think may be appropriate, given the number of factual and legal issues. And I also will reiterate, reiterate, um, consideration of some page limit for the remaining protesters, since, you know, they are mutually aligned to a large degree. And then, uh, also a page limit for CCRB. And as to, uh, the parent district, uh, ID one and Alisal Guest Ranch. Uh, I don't have a position on, uh, whether their briefs, uh, should be consolidated or they can file separately, but also. Uh, you know, you should, uh, in my opinion, you should, you know, uh, take into consideration, you know, their involvement and. And the scope of issues that, you know, that they're involved in and, and issue some appropriate, uh, page limit, uh, for their briefs as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. And I, I do understand that and we will turn to this issue. I will represent to you right now that I will, um, expand the page limits. For solving, we can talk about what that would be, but I, but I will do that. I under, I, I. Fully appreciate that you, solving has to address both this complex water rights question and then also complex. Both biological and hydrogeological issues as well. So I, I, I appreciate that. And I think I'm likely to expand page limits. We'll see how we do it, but with respect to others as well. Um, but, and, but understanding that there is a, and. That solving is in the position of responding to everything. Um, and, and so there is, that, that's a consideration. So we'll return to that and I will, I do want you to have the chance to brief these issues thoroughly because they're. Complicated and there's a lot of evidence. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I think now I will continue to go around the room, uh, to, with comments on the water rights, the legal water rights issues that we were discussing. Mr. Kavistad, do you have, uh, any comment that you would like to add on the, the water rights question?
Um, just briefly, um, I think the, uh, Mr. Troud's characterization and summary, um. Of the history and content of the various decisions and orders on the river is correct. Um, uh, we agree with that. Um, and, and just to be, uh. Blunt, I don't think, uh. Frankly, CCRB has a dog in this fight. I think they're, um, trying to. As Mr. Stroud said, revisit things that have already been decided, but, um, in short, I think we will, uh. Be briefing this, this issue fairly heavily as well. Um, because it's, it's an important one. Um, and I, but again, I think the, it's limited to. What's occurring for this permit versus the Kachuma Project itself. Um, I, we do not want, we don't believe that that's appropriate for CCRB to try to reopen, um. Matters concerning Kachuma Project operations in this proceeding. But we'll, we'll address that later on. And thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Hastings, do you have any comments on behalf of Alisal Guest Ranch?
No, I don't have any, but of course we would like the opportunity to brief this in writing later on. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you. I will, uh, just to make sure we get, we get around fully as, um, I realize the, the fisheries entities here may, I, I assume are primarily interested in the, in different issues. However, I do want to give the opportunity, if you have comment on the legal water rights requirements issues here. Just come off mute or turn your camera on and let me know. All right. I'll, I'll take one last, um, Mr. Bivens, do you, is there anything, any final word? I think you may have had the last word, but do you need, do you need, have any further comment?
I, I don't have any further comment except to, um, you know, Mr. Kim suggested when thinking about closing briefs and page limit that aligned parties, uh. Perhaps. But to be limited in some way, uh, with respect to briefing the issues on, on which they're aligned. I've now heard one, two, three, four folks from the downstream and, and entities suggest that they're going to brief this water rights issue heavily. Um, you know, to the extent they're going to be. Uh, page limits imposed, um, I would think those, those page limits should take into account the fact that there's substantial overlap between those four entities on that issue.
Thank you. Noted. And Mr. Stroud, I see you're off mute as well. Do you have something else you would like to add?
Uh, just, just a, a very brief comment in response to what Mr. Bivens just said. Um, the, the parent district is in an interesting position here. We represent all downstream users of water. So the city of Solvang are all our constituents, but so are the cities of Lompoc, Bueltown, San Inez, lots of other communities, lots of agricultural users. So wh- while we are aligned in general on the final analysis here, we also represent a unique interest, especially as the party tasked with administering this water rights release regime. I, I hope that my prior appearances in front of you have led you to believe I can keep myself on task and helpful in my brief. So please, please don't cut my pages or make me do a joint brief with somebody else. I've got a lot of complications to get through.
Noted. Thank you, Mr. Stroud. Um, Ms. Hastings, I see you're off mute. Did you want to?
Yeah, someone, I wanted to thank Mr. Stroud and to, um, join in his request. Um, while I appreciate that ID one and solvent, excuse me, the Alisal Guest Ranch are, um. Aligned in having settled their protests with solving in this hearing. Um, the Alisal Guest Ranch is a repair in user, uh, of course, different than appropriators. And, and has a unique position, uh, that may be, um. Uh, worthy of, of some articulation in, in a written brief to be determined. Um, but just for the record to indicate that, of course, uh, as a repairian to somewhat different position, um, than the parent district and ID one as well.
Understood. Thank you. I think what I'd like to do at this point, unless there's. Sounds like there's not further discussion. I, I think it's an appropriate time to take a break and then for lunch and then pick up, uh, after lunch with. CCRB's witnesses. Um, before we break, I wanted to suggest some discussion over lunch with, um. By each of the parties, if there is. Take a look at my ruling of yesterday and the, the potential sur rebuttal topics that I called out. There, and maybe actually let's, let's have a brief conversation about that. What I'm going to ask is whether. If, if all of you are prepared, whether you have any comments on the sur rebuttal topics. That I suggested would be considered. I think I can recite those off the top of my head. One, I was going to allow, um, solving to present sur rebuttal and other parties to present sur rebuttal to Mr. Custis's testimony. Uh, the second was, uh, allowing sur rebuttal on the issue of, um. Disconnection between the surface flow and underflow with respect to the San Inez River. Specifically and, uh, acknowledging that there. On cross-examination, we got testimony re, uh, on the, the concept of a capillary zone. Uh, if I'm using the term correctly, the, where there's some. Uh, disconnection is not a, an absolute, um, determination that there is a zone in which. Disconnection occurs. Uh, and related to that, CDFW one twenty-five, I believe that's the exhibit that, um, Mr. Bivens used on cross. It's a CDFW exhibit, but Mr. Bivens used on cross examination of Mr. Custis, if I recall correctly. So those were the topics I had identified. At this time, maybe I'll turn to you, Ms. O'Sullivan, uh, if it's, if it's. If it's fair, or if you need a chance to think about it over lunch, that's fine too. But are there, do you have any comments on the, the scope of this limited sur rebuttal that I proposed in my written ruling, if you've had a chance to look at it?
Thank you, Ms. Kinsey. I have looked at your ruling, uh, and we, you know, appreciate the acceptance of our. Submit all of sur rebuttal to Mr. Custis's testimony so far and would welcome the opportunity to submit, uh, further sur rebuttal regarding. The, uh, you know, issues surrounding CDFW one twenty-five and this issue of disconnection. So, uh, you know, that is appreciated.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bivens, do you have comments on the, the proposed scope of sur rebuttal?
No, no, I have, I have no comments on that.
Okay. Um, Mr. Puccini, I see you're coming off mute, so I'll turn to you.
Yes, thank you. I just for a point of clarification, when the. City submitted its sur rebuttal. Um, it was doing so in part in response to a procedural ruling which allowed them to do sur rebuttal, uh, as a result of Mr. Muha's changes. And as you know, they included, um, additional sur rebuttal to Mr. Kisses, Mr. Custis's testimony, which frankly threw us for a loop. Uh, in any case, um, the request at the time by Ms. O'Sullivan was to, in the event that you denied their motion. To go ahead and allow the submittal of. That sur rebuttal. To Mr. Custis's testimony. And so my understanding is. The sur rebuttal that you're allowing. Would be limited to that. Sur rebuttal which Solvang has already admitted. Is that correct?
I don't think I've clarified that issue. Uh, I was going to. To, I think we should address it. Uh, I had opened up, it seemed appropriate to me that if, um. Solving had the opportunity to present sur rebuttal to Mr. Custis, if there were other parties that. Namely would be maybe CCRB, but if there were other parties that wanted to do that, that would be an opportunity. Um, I don't think it's. Uh, solving helpfully in advance prepped Mr. Nicely's testimony in the sur rebuttal, but maybe let, can I ask you, Ms. O'Sullivan? Would the city, um, if we were to set a hearing date out in January? Would the city be seeking to submit? Um, to the extent, you know, additional sur rebuttal, or would you be relying on Mr. Nicely's sur rebuttal? um, to the extent, you know, additional sir rebuttal, or would you be relying on Mr. Nicely's sir rebuttal that he's already submitted?
A little bit of both. Uh, certainly the, the sir rebuttal that we submitted in response to Mr. Custis's written rebuttal testimony would remain. Uh, and so the parties have, you know, ample notice of that at this point, because again, Mr. Nicely has not testified to that at, yet. Um, and then your order also discusses separately some sir rebuttal to try to get at the heart of this issue of the disconnection, which is something that I think you yourself, Ms. Kinsey, want clarification on. And so the city would offer to submit limited sir rebuttal, you know, in a, like in response to that particular question of yours.
Thank you. That's helpful. But in, and just to clarify, the city would not be seeking to submit additional sir rebuttal directly in response to Mr. Custis, Custis's rebuttal testimony.
Right, I think.
I realize the issues overlap somewhat, but.
Yeah, yes. And it did come, the disconnection discussion that I think yours, your order is discussing as potential for additional sir rebuttal testimony certainly came out in Mr. Custis's cross-examination. Uh, and so, you know, I have not had the chance to discuss this with Mr. Nicely. Uh, he would be our witness that we would rely on. But, you know, without, um, prejudicing me for clarifying this further after I speak with him. Um, my sense would be that we would provide some limited testimony just on the disconnection issue to try to clarify the city's um, position on, on that issue as it came about with CDF one, CDFW one twenty-five and the cross-examination of Mr. Custis. Um, so, you know, I, I guess it would relate to his testimony to the extent that he talks about disconnection. Mr. Custis talks about disconnection in his written rebuttal testimony. Um, but we wouldn't, you know, I, we're not suggesting that we would get a, a whole nother bite at the apple to like redo our, our, uh, sir rebuttal to his testimony. I, I hope that.
That's helpful. No, I understand. Mr. Puccini, do you have a follow-up?
I, I, no, I, yeah, I appreciate that. I think I understand. And just to make sure we're on the same page. My understanding then is that the sir rebuttal that the city did submit previously, um, would remain or would be offered essentially. Um, and then the only additional sir rebuttal, um, would be as to this disconnection issue, um, which I think, uh, I, I, that's how I understand it at least.
Correct. That's my understanding as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there other, um, comments about the scope of sir rebuttal? I think we'll talk about this again when we talk about scheduling dates, but I wanted to put you on alert of what I'm thinking about as the scope so that you can talk with um, your witnesses and talk about availability, hopefully over the lunch break for that week of January eighth and the following week. And I will ask you questions about that to report back, um, if possible, after lunch. Is, is there anything else we should address before we break for lunch? All right, I will, uh, give us all a full hour, so let's return at, well, let's just go ahead and make it even. Let's return at one o'clock and we'll get started with CCRB's, uh, witnesses. Thank you.